You ready to report?
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, this is the Harwich Planning Board meeting for Tuesday 23rd of March 2021. This meeting is being held via remote participation. Only access is available through go to meeting.com and live broadcast on channel 18. I'd like to call this meeting to order, the roll call. Let's do Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz here.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse here.
Alan Peterson. Mary Mazlofsky.
Mary Mazlofsky here.
Joe McPhee.
Joe McPhee here.
David Harris.
David Harris here.
Greg Chadwick. And Duncan Berry is here. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 20, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Harwich Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. Tonight, we have two public hearings. We have a public meeting with some old and new business. Also be joined by Sarah Cordjev at the end to discuss some of the developments in the design guidelines of the West Harwich Historic District. Plus, we've got some housekeeping items that we will deal with after the public hearings. So first item in public hearings is item A, PB 2021-04, 7-Eleven Main Street LLC, Somail Patel, manager, seeks approval to modify site plan review special permit PB 2019-18 and PB 2020-31 to relocate the fence from the southerly property line to just off the rear parking lot attaching it to the guardrail. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section 325-5. Property is located at 7-Eleven Main Street, map 41 parcel D8 in the C-B and Harwich Center overlay district. Will we hear from Mr. Patel?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Somail Patel. I'm here seeking an approval to move the fence that was approved in the last meeting from the rear of the property line to the existing guardrail that we have in the parking lot.
Okay. Was there any further comment that you wanted to make about the?
Oh, this is gonna be a four-foot fence that we're gonna attach it straight to the existing guardrail that we have. This is being done because previously we got an approval to put it at the property line, but it was not sufficient to do screening for all the neighbors that we have on the south side of the property. So now we have decided, after doing a meeting with the neighbors, to put the fence on like the rear of the parking lot, so it does a better screening. And attaching to the guardrail is gonna be the best approach according to us.
Okay. Megan, was there anything from the town that we wanted to check in on here with staff comments?
Fire and health weighed in with no issues or concerns. We've had no written correspondence from the Butters with any concerns, and all planning board requirements have been met so far.
Very good. Anybody in the board care to weigh in? Mary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just point out that Mr. Patel came to the Historic District Historic Commission last, our last meeting, to seek approval to install the fence. So we did grant approval on a certificate of appropriateness for a flat top cedar board fence to be installed on top of the guardrail.
Okay, Arthur, let's see, you raised your hand.
Yeah, I'd like to just take a second to commend Mr. Patel for solving a potential problem, you know, with his neighbors. To do this in such a timely manner is commendable.
Dave, Bill, Joe?
No, I have nothing.
No comment. Well, I think that the planning board requirements have been met.
Mr. Chairman?
Can the public comment?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. So this is Susan Cedar, my assistant, Peter Antonellis. And we did submit a letter late today about the fence. And I think I sent it to Elaine Banta. And I did try to send it to you as well, but I have it in front of me, so I'd like to read that.
Please do.
We are all in favor of moving the fence to the edge of the parking lot, but essentially we would like a six-foot fence. So I'd like to read my letter. Dear Chair and members of the Planning Board, when people want privacy in their backyard, they do not put up a four-foot fence. They put up a six-foot fence. We are writing to request that you require Mr. Patel to put up a six-foot fence to screen our residential property from his convenience store parking lot, which we reasonably anticipate will be busy with cars, people, trucks, seven days a week. Similar businesses in town utilize six-foot fences as screens. In January, the Planning Board conditioned its approval of parking lot modifications on the installation of a six-foot fence along our shared boundary. Subsequently, upon a joint physical inspection of the site with Mr. Patel, us, and Mr. Stewart of 98 Parallel Street, we all agreed that locating a fence on the boundary was not feasible, and Mr. Patel would investigate whether a solid six-foot fence panels could be attached to the existing guardrail at the edge of the parking lot instead. Mr. Patel later informed us that four-foot, a four-foot tall panels could be used, but not six-foot tall panels, as they could not be secured to the existing rail. And so now he presents the plan utilizing a four-foot tall fence panel. Mr. Patel already has a six-foot tall stockade fence built along the ridg of the parking lot behind the dumpster. And when he was designing and building the parking lot, he might have chosen to extend that six-foot stockade fence along the entire rear parking lot. Instead, he seemingly relied on trees planted at the base of his new retaining wall, trees that are planted eight feet below the surface of the parking lot to offer a screen to our residential property. Those trees don't really offer any screen at all. There is no fence, and so now here we are. A six-foot fence provides substantially more screening than a four-foot fence. While we sincerely regret that it may not be as easy or as inexpensive for Mr. Patel to erect a six-foot fence, nonetheless, that's the standard height for a screening fence. He reasonably could have anticipated the need for such a fence earlier when it may have been less costly, but we should not be denied an adequate screen on this town. We therefore urge the Planning Board to require that Mr. Patel install a six-foot fence along the rear border of his parking lot. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add one thing. We did see the diagram that Mr. Patel submitted, and we've gone to the property and taken some of our own measurements, but we're uncertain as to what precisely the board has been, is in receipt of. For example, the plan that we have for Mr. Patel, it came to us maybe two weeks ago. It indicates that, well, it does not indicate precisely where in relationship to the existing guardrail the new four-foot fence would go. So that's a detail that is of some concern to us. But we're a little bit skeptical because the last time the board approved a fence, it did approve a six-foot fence. And we're really concerned as to why we're compelled to be responding to a small offense at this time. We have been in email contact with Mr. Patel and his attorney over this.
May I even request that whoever's moving the papers around they mute? I think that might be Mr. McLaughlin. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Did you want to respond, Mr. Patel?
Yeah, so I have been in contact with Mr. Antonellis and his wife from early on in the project. And in the beginning, we decided that, you know, putting up Leyland cypresses in the rear property would be sufficient for screening, but it did not happen. So we, you know, heard from them, and they said that, you know, the screening is not enough. So then we came to you, Planning Board, again, to put up a fence on the property line. But then it seemed like it's not gonna be doing screening for all the neighbors. And then our intention was to put up a six-foot fence. But I talked to my architect, and he suggested that if we put up a six-foot fence attached to the guardrail, then if there is high winds or any storm or anything, then it would not be secure to the guardrail, and it might fall down. So he suggested that putting up a four-foot fence will be sufficient to do the screening. And I have been in contact with Mr. Antonellis and his wife. And we want to put up a six-foot fence, but according to our architect, it's not a good idea. So then I have suggested that we put up a fence probably six or eight inches higher from the ground level to bring the screening as much as we can. So we are over here trying to do our best to minimize the cost and do the screening for our neighbors. And we have been in contact with the neighbors, and we have been trying to resolve the issue.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, we do appreciate the fact that Samuel and his lawyer, Rick Kahoon, were working with us all through this. But technically speaking, I'm really at a loss as to understand how, once they've already sunk for the guardrail, six by six-inch posts, I'm uncertain as to how it's impossible to put in a four-foot post adjacent to that, so that independently can extend six feet to manage a six-foot panel. I just, I'm at a loss as to understand how that is.
So we're wondering, you know, did he contact several different fence companies to find out? No, it absolutely can't be done. You know, if this is just a cost saving for him to put up the four-foot versus the six-foot, then I think he should be required to put up six feet, because that's a typical screen. And this is gonna be a busy parking lot. And, you know, this is the historic district. We're in a residence. It's gonna most likely stay a residence.
Interestingly enough, one last thing, if I may. The properties on either side of our location, that is 102 Parallel, 98 Parallel, were for a while being operated as commercial establishments, but they're residences, residences, and it's residential. So the street is largely residential, but certainly the three of Butters are all residential properties. And we'd like you to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Mary?
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, Bill. I think you're at your hand up. Let me recognize her first, please.
I'll be quick, Bill. So, Mr. Patel, just one question. I was of the understanding that the fence was going to be installed on top of the guardrail. Am I wrong, or are we taking separate parts?
It's not going to be on top of the guardrail. It's gonna be attached on front of the guardrail as we have given the diagram of how it will be done.
Okay, Bill?
Okay, my question is, the finished surface at the vertical curb, what is the distance from the top of the surface to the top of the curb?
If I may?
So it is the drop from the parking lot to the ground level, right? You're asking?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, it's, I think, approximately, I think, eight feet.
Now, from the finished surface of the parking lot to the top of the vertical curb stop, what's that distance?
Vertical. So the guardrail you're asking, right?
Not the guardrail, Mr. Patel, but the curb stop that prevents the cars from going into the guardrail.
Oh, yes, yes. So that's probably like three to four inches.
Oh, okay. Because the shelf, it's more like a foot, and that would actually make it a five-foot-high fence from the top of the surface to the top of the fence.
Yeah, so like when we will attach the panels, probably like six or eight inches higher from the ground level, then it's not gonna be five foot, but it's gonna be probably like 410 approximately.
That's my question.
Thanks, Bill. Any other concerns? Yes, Dave, please.
Yeah, I'm wondering if the architect indicated that a five-foot fence would be satisfactory attached to the guardrail. You said six feet was not. Maybe a five-foot fence would be a good compromise.
Yeah, but so what we, when I discussed that with my architect, he said that we can raise the four-foot panel, and that would almost give us the five-foot height. So that's why we are gonna be raising.
So the four-foot panel, cedar panels are gonna be raised six or eight inches above the ground level?
Yes, sir.
Did he say that the maximum length of the cedar fence posts was four feet? Or is there a possibility that it could be five feet with the additional raised off the ground, bring it all just under six feet? Maybe that would be a compromise that would be acceptable to the Antonellis.
Well, see, what's happening is these panels are gonna be temporary because Leyland cypresses is gonna grow probably two to three feet every year. So we won't need these fence after probably like three years. So we are trying to minimize the cost of doing the screening. And by doing the five-foot panels, it's gonna add additional cost to us. So we thought that if we raise it by six or eight inches, we get almost the five-feet height of screen.
So you're saying that the additional length of a one foot on the cedar rails is a cost problem?
Yes.
Thank you.
Arthur?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Patel, is it possible to raise what's there now? Another foot or so up, and then attach the fence to it?
Yeah, well, then it would be, it would not be sturdy enough if we add something on top of the existing guardrail. I have already discussed that with my architect.
So if you will. Go ahead.
The only other option is putting additional post next to it. But then, you know, digging a hole and putting those posts, and the labor cost goes up by a lot.
Mary?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. How far is this guardrail from the property line, from where the existing six-foot fence is?
What existence?
So from the parking lot, right? I mean, the parking space ends and the guardrail starts?
So I'm just asking, the Antonellis has mentioned that you were moving, that you had a six-foot fence on the property line, and that this was, this was now putting it near the guardrail? Is there a?
No, no, no. I, we just had a six-foot approved for putting it at the property line. But now we are bringing it on top of the finished grade, which is like the parking lot. And we're putting a four, we're trying to put a four-foot fence, raise probably six or eight inches from the ground.
That is still on the property, that's still on the property line, the boundary line?
No, it's not on the property line. So on the.
Thirty feet from the property line.
So it's thirty feet forward through the property line?
Yes.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering, if it's that far forward from the property line, is it actually gonna give you the same site protection based on the topography of the lot? And I can't answer that question without seeing it. But to me, a six-foot fence on the property line, further back, I would almost think a fence forward, the shorter fence, might actually give you the same or similar height protection. And I'm just thinking, I can't visualize it myself. I'm asking the question.
For the TV in the bedroom?
What's happening is like the topography at the property line changes as we get towards the 98 Parallel Street House. So I also met with that neighbor, and they say that if we put even a six-foot fence at the property line, it would not do any screening for them. So that's the reason why we brought it to rear of the parking lot, to do better screening for all the neighbors. I was, I was looking at the bylaws, and I'm required to put up only three feet of screening. And this is gonna be probably like four foot, six or eight inches of screening. So I think, you know, this should be enough to do the screening for neighbors.
So, Mr. Patel, I have to say you have a special permit. So your permit outlines the conditions, and the conditions are what were approved. So it's not necessarily the bylaw. It's based on the special permit conditions. So, and the conditions that were imposed by the Historic Commission as well. So I'm not sure. I'm just, I'm trying to, trying to visualize the sightlines, and I just can't off the top of my head with a four for, four versus a six foot at that location right at the moment.
So could I add? If you stood in our backyard, there would be no question in your mind that a six-foot fence on the edge of the parking lot would be the most effective screen. And in fact, there's a picture that I submitted in January of the back of the wall. And in fact, it's attached to the letter I sent today as well. But it shows what that would look like from our backyard. And, you know, he's being optimistic that these trees are gonna grow. They're just now at the top of the wall. And so, you know, they go up maybe an inch from the, from the wall, because there's an eight-foot drop-off.
Okay, we have two factors here. Megan has the site plan that she could share from her desktop, which I would think we ought to do. And number two is, I don't know if I'm the only person here with experience with Leyland cypresses, but these things grow like topsy. I mean, I've had to, I mean, it's like unbelievable. You're gonna, it's, it'll be overwhelming. You're gonna wish that they didn't use, you know, in like 10 years. You're like, cut it off. But.
Well, we understand that.
That's a personal obligation.
Mr. Chairman, we have Leyland cypress on our property, and we've been planting new ones for a while. You know, we know what that's about. But the issue is if the fence, if the fence is not providing the height necessary to obstruct the glare, the question is, so we wait two years? We wait three years for, you know, I mean, yes, you're right, they do grow fast. But so are we to balance the additional costs to Mr. Patel versus two, three years? The time, and then say, well, you know, spread over three or four years wasn't such a bad investment. But I just don't want to be left in a situation where we're quibbling about it once it's been decided and once we got everything erected. That's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to make it any more problematic for anybody.
All right, let's take a look at what we have on the screen here. Thank you so much, Megan. Looks like the lower edge of the darkened area is what the property line is. And. The Leyland cypresses are shown here in these kind of rosettes that are strung across. The back of the lot with the guardrail is directly on top of that. And then you have the parking lot with the slots as vertical lines. Do I have that correct?
Yes, if I may add.
Okay.
If I may, at one point, which is not depicted in the illustration, if there is a depression of eight feet
Right.
from about three feet beyond our property line, and that's not, it's not in that diagram either. But the diagram that you had up gives me a sense of trying to convey it to you. The point is, is there must be a gully or a canal, if you will, between the retaining wall, which holds up the parking lot, because that's really at street level for the most part. And our lot, which is also at street level, but between our property and those Leyland cypress, it's a depression.
It's a depression.
It's a depression. As Mr. Patel said, he put up, you know, six, seven, or eight-foot Leyland cypress, and they barely reached to the, to the level of the parking lot's surface. So in trying to put up a fence, first of all, putting up a fence on our property, it's certainly not where we wanted. If you're gonna maintain a fence, it has to be on your property. Otherwise, we own it too, and, you know, that's not a good deal for us. But, but my point is, is there is a slope that's gotta be 45 degrees easily leading from our property towards the, towards the parking lot. And if anything that's off of our property line towards the parking lot, if it moves one foot, it's down one foot. So that line is just unworkable. So we're really left with, as Mr. Patel suggested, we'll put it, we'll put something on around the perimeter close to the parking lot. That is the best place for it. The question is, how high does it need to be to do its, to do its thing?
One second, I just wanted to ask if Ms. Mazlofsky appreciates this? Is this helping you, but?
It's, it's not right at the moment, but yes, to the extent of the site plan, I just needed to see it. But, you know, I don't know that there's a good answer at the moment.
I think there's like, it looks like we're talking about a sheer drop of, you know, 68 feet in that gray hatch zone or gray shaded zone and that trapezoid. And I think that's the area that when you go above the tree line, you know, there's, it's insufficient coverage. So that's what, if I'm understanding the critique, that's what it sounds like. So, Mr. Patel, did you, you have your hand up?
Yes, so the height of the average car for the headlight is about 24 to 26 inches. So that's about like two feet. And I'm not sure how the headlight flare can get over four feet or more than four feet, like probably four, eight height, and, you know, cause any issue to the neighbors. So I'm not sure, like, how putting up a four and eight, eight-inch fence is not going to do that job. That, that's, I'm not really understanding.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bill?
Mr. Patel, how many sections of fence are going across that back wall?
Um, one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep. So the description that I have doesn't specify exactly how many will be there.
About a hundred feet.
I can, I can definitely find out. So the section between the two boxes is about eight feet. So the section between the two is about eight feet. Um, so I'm guessing that it might be like ten.
The section's number eighty-three.
If they're eight-foot panels, then you would think the, and it's about a hundred-foot span, you should have about thirteen panels.
Yeah, something like that.
Uh, we got because he's, he's already gonna have six-foot fence where the, where the, um, the dumpsters are. So he's only gonna have to put the fence from the dumpsters to the edge of the lot line on the east side. So I'm done thinking that's what, maybe eighty-five feet or ninety feet? Guessing? Mr. Patel?
Yeah, so it should be between probably ten and thirteen. Uh, I'm not, I'm not exact on how many will be used, but it should be your.
Chadwick?
Thank you. Uh, just for the record, I was on the telephone. I was having some technical issues with my laptop. Um, I got on about six oh three, just for the, uh, the roll call. I missed the roll call, but I was on it about six oh three. Thank you. Uh, a question, uh, Mary, did you say earlier that, um, the conditions specified a six-foot fence? Or was that from us, the planning board? Or was that Historical, um, Commission? Or did I hear that wrong?
So what I said, Craig, is any, that, uh, Mr. Patel had referenced the bylaws. And what I said is that his permitting is under a special permit. So whatever conditions we did impose are the conditions that he's required to, to, um, that govern his, his use. So I, I don't have the old conditions in front of me at the moment. I'm, I can't swear to them without looking at it. Um, I'm just saying that he was referring to a bylaw and I was correcting him on the, on the fact that it's the special permit that was, and the special permit conditions that would govern not necessarily the bylaw provisions.
Thank you. Yeah. So do we, were there conditions, um, issued regarding the height of the fence when we approved um, last year, two months ago?
That's what I was just looking for. Um, do you have that document, Mr. Patel? The statement?
From the last meeting?
It would have been a, in your, the material that you would have received, would have been the, um, findings that were adopted, for the most correct, Mary? Are findings of fact? You're muted.
So, Mr. Chair, I would just suggest if we don't have it readily available, then we should continue to a date certain and be able to pull it up and, and see what those original conditions were.
That'd be the actual answer right there. I, does everybody agree with that?
Because again, I just wanna, I just wanna point out for everyone, if, if what is different, if we vote something different tonight or at Plating Board than what Mr. Patel just got approved at Historic, it's gonna have to come back to Historic again.
Right.
Versus for six-foot versus four-foot. Um, so I'm just throwing that out there, so.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense, um, because why complicate Mr. Patel's efforts and why uh, uh, complicate Mr. Antonellis's and, um, Ms. Seder's, uh, expectations at this point? Let's get the facts on the table and get the things, you go, all the blocks available, and we'll have that discussion resolve this very quickly. Is that okay? Do we have a motion maybe for that?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes, I just wanted to let the board think about this also. If he has a four or a five-foot fence attached to the guardrail, it's gonna be a far better blocker for the lights than if he had the six-foot fence down at the property line. So that's something to think about.
Right. Mary?
So, Mr. Chair, that was kind of what I was thinking as well when it comes to a four-foot being forward from the property line versus a six-foot on the property line. So, so again, that's kind of what I was wrestling with in, in my head as well. Um, but, uh, before we do any votes, you know, I, I do think we should check with, um, uh, our Assistant Town Administrator to see what our next meeting is and whether the applicant could even attend the next meeting.
That's.
Your, your next meeting is scheduled for April thirteenth.
Two weeks.
Mr. Patel, would you be able to come back at that point?
Um, I already have a, another meeting, um, on that day.
So our meeting after that would be what, the, the end of April, Megan?
Next one's the twenty-seventh after that.
Yeah.
That's a Tuesday, right?
Yep.
Uh, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So last time the fence was at the property line and now the location has changed. So then how would getting an approval for the property line would affect this, uh, proposal?
I think that go ahead, sorry, Mary.
If I can, I'm just saying, what exists now is what exists. And without a further approval from us, then those are the conditions that stand. Um, the issue you have is that you've also got a historic approval to do a four-foot fence at the, at the guardrail. So, um, the, the two have to match to some degree?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm asking like, so, um, I'm proposing that the same four-foot fence here. So why, why are we taking it to the next meeting since I'm relocating the fence? Um, I'm, I'm not sure.
So I would suggest that if the board's not ready to make, to, to complete its decision, then we would continue it to a subsequent meeting. That's how we, that's how we do things.
Right. Dave?
If I may briefly.
Yeah, I.
We welcome you all to our property and have a look at it. If that's, I know that's unorthodox, but, you know, just knock on the door. We wear masks here, but, uh, you know, and take a look at the property and see for yourself. Take measures.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I have a reading question for the, to the Antonellis, sir, the chair. Is your objective to, uh, prevent headlights shining down on your property? Or is your objective to prevent people in the parking lot from looking down on your property? Or is it both?
Both. Uh, you use the word looking down on. Uh, our lot and their lot is pretty much level. Okay? Uh, so putting something on their lot around the perimeter of the parking lot would be, I, would be the, the better solution than to have it on, on, on their property on the slope. What, or what you're talking about?
And the six-foot fence.
The Leyland cypress. So essentially, the Leyland cypress will solve the problem in time.
Yes, but it's gonna be not, it's gonna be at least two years before those Leyland cypresses are, they're really, they're, they're at ground level. I mean, if they were planted level with the, I mean, they're this high above the, this high above the, uh.
I understand that. So, so the, the, the possibility of, of increasing the height of the, uh, proposed fence from four feet to five feet in lieu of building a, a, a stockade prince on the property line makes a lot of sense to me. But, hey, I'm just, just saying, if we can get a, if we can solve the problem tonight and keep everybody from having to come back in two or four weeks.
You know, I think we're entitled to an effective screen. And this is a pretty, gonna be a pretty busy parking lot, seven days a week. And, you know, a six-foot fence is a big difference between four feet or five feet and six feet. And six feet is just what everybody else gets.
All right.
And it is not just those headlights. It's also the people that.
Right.
But if you, if you, if you went with what was originally agreed upon, the six-foot fence in the lot line, that is not gonna do anywhere near as much as a five-foot fence on top of that wall. It's gonna be a great difference. For the.
But I think.
Mr. Chairman? I have an answer to how high off the lot it actually will be if you put some four-foot fence up there. How high is it actually gonna be above the, uh, above the grade of the parking lot?
It's gonna be probably like four foot, uh, ten inches. So we can raise it to almost eight inches, uh, addition to the existing two, two to three inches that we, uh, have currently in the plan. So it's gonna be probably four foot, ten inches. That's what the architect has said, but maybe we might be able to raise it even more and, and make it of, you know, to the height of a five-feet-tall, uh, fence.
Mr. Chadwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It, it sounds like, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, but it sounds like everybody's in agreement that a fence at the property line would probably have to be, I mean, maybe exaggerating, eight feet or ten feet high, um, in order to accomplish what sounds like we're trying to accomplish. And that doesn't seem realistic. So if we can, maybe I'll agree on that, then we can move on, as Mary suggests, and find out what the, the condition, uh, issued by the Historical Commission is for a fence on the guardrail. And then if we have to come back and if we can do that compromise of five feet, uh, that sounds to me like it might be an acceptable solution. Again, not putting words in anybody's mouth, just offering an opinion.
Yep. Hi, Mary.
So my only concern is that if we take a vote tonight and it, it's, it doesn't work, it's another whole application again, it's another advertisement again, it's another public hearing again, and it's even further delayed. So to me, it makes more sense if Mr. Patel can speak to your architect and see see how high possibly a four-foot fence could go to provide the screening. Then at least if we have answers, then, then maybe it's a simple, then maybe it's a simple, um, vote. But without kind of the exact answers and without knowing exactly what are, what they were, the conditions were originally imposed, um, I, I, I don't, I just don't think it's smart to, for everybody to fly blind.
Cool.
One person's opinion, but.
Remember, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Um, if you raise the, the fence off the, the grade, you know, up to eight inches or even ten inches off the grade, it's gonna defeat the purpose because the, the headlights are gonna shine underneath the fence. So I think the com- best compromise, if everyone would agree to it, after looking at it, would be for them to put a five-foot fence up, which is gonna be equal to almost a six-foot fence when it's all done. Hey, Javu?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we keep going back to the same thing. I think we need to, um, have a motion here, uh, to decide what the board wants to do with this. We've discussed the idea of, um, continuing this so we can get the facts on the conditions laid down by the Historical District Commission. And to clarify the condit- excuse me?
Just not the Historic Commission, really the, the special permit conditions for, by that, from this board. That's, I think, a bigger concern.
Right. Tho- those are that, as well as, uh, the Historic Commission, just to so, see what all the pieces are. Just, let's get all the pieces are, have this conversation when they're on the table. Do, do we agree with that? I mean, because we, we can go back and forth on placement, location, variables, parallax, night, day, you know, unless we know what the facts, the, 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 the actual facts in the ground are, it's all speculative. It's not fair to both parties, I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chadwick?
Thank you. Um, would you like a motion that we continue to a date and time certain?
I would.
Uh, make that motion.
Do we have to close the public hearing first?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. If it's a to a day and time certain, you need to give the date and the time.
I, right. I was ju- I was just gonna ask Megan, I think Mr. Patel said, uh, the thirteenth of April was not good for him. And the next was the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
Mr. Patel? Twenty-seventh, weren't? So I will make a motion that we continue this hearing to, uh, April twenty-seventh at no sooner than six-thirty.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion. I have a second. Roll call, vote. Bill Stoltz?
Aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Aye.
Mary Masowski?
Mary Masowski, aye.
Bill McFarland? You're muted, Joe. Joe?
Joe, you're on the phone. It's star six to unmute yourself.
There he goes. There, Joe? Uh, David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Uh, Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Only one we're missing there is Joe. Uh, so we have a, a full vote. Uh, thank you, all parties. Appreciate your patience. We will see you on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So next.
Mr. Chairman, can you? Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
I can hear you loud and clear. Thank you. Did, did we not get your vote on that last one, yea or nay?
It was aye.
It was an aye. Okay, we got you. Thank you. Cross that off. So that takes us to the second item on our public hearings, a continuance. BB twenty-twenty dash twenty-four, one ninety-five Queen Anne Road LLC is applicant. George J. McLaughlin, the third, is manager. Daniel A. Ojala, P E, uh, P L S is representative. Seeks approval of a site plan review special permit and a special permit for structures with a gross floor area of, uh, greater than seventy-five, seventy-five hundred square feet and twenty or more new parking spaces pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, Sections three twenty-five dash fifty-five and three twenty-five dash nine and dash fifty-one to construct an industrial warehouse contractor structure, seven bays, nine thousand square feet. Property is located at one ninety-five Queen Anne Road, map fifty-eight parcel F one dash two in the I dash L zoning district. So we have both Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Ojala on the phone. Uh, who would like to step up? Mr. Ojala, thank you.
Chairman Barry, uh, members of the board, can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Yes. Okay, great. Um, uh, my name is Dan Ojala. For the record, I'm a land surveyor and civil engineer with Down Cape Engineering in Yarmouth Port, on helping Mr. McLaughlin, who is in the audience, out with permitting, uh, at the property here. A nice, large property uh, off of Queen Anne Road, uh, in that, uh, industrial, um, IL district. Um, this property, um, uh, has nice, quiet neighbors. It's the solar farm there for the, uh, turn, the old transfer station property on the east and the south. And the west is some similar uses. Uh, across the street, there's some cell phone towers, so um, not a lot of objection, um, by any neighbors, um, and, um, or, or anything like that. So that's perhaps, uh, this is a, a, a good, a good use for the site. Um, in the past, the rear of the site has been, uh, utilized basically as like a contractor's yard, cleared and stuff stored. Uh, Mr. McLaughlin liked to clean it all up and he's done a good job of that. If you look at the old aerials, it was a real boneyard back there. But he's got everything pretty much cleaned up now and, um, trying to, uh, get things arranged to put a nice little building back there. Uh, as you mentioned on the, uh, advertisement, we'd originally started out at about a ninety-nine-hundred-foot building and working with, uh, staff. Um, there was a little bit of concern over the, um, parking arrangements and, 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 uh, and so forth. So we toned it down a little bit. The, um, one of the. The, um, one of the thresholds that you look at is seventy-five hundred is a sprinkler system is required. So we pulled it just under that level there. Um, we still are adding the twenty spaces, so the, the special permit that you're granting would be applicable either way. It's a seventy, over seventy-five hundred or twenty spaces. So where we would fall squarely in the latter, uh, uh, category of, of, um, permitting, uh, either way. Um, this has been continued a number of times. Again, Griffin Rider, your able, uh, town engineer looked at it. He was, uh, with the new stormwater bylaws, felt we ought to introduce some, uh, grass-lined retention areas or rain gardens, as we call them, with, with vegetation in the bottom to, uh, help soak up a little bit of nitrogen and, um, phosphorus. Um, the stormwater regulations, uh, that's pretty much the way you handle phosphorus these days, is to have some vegetation that can take it up during the growing season. Uh, we're not in a zone two, uh, which is a good, a, a nice feature on this site. So, um, there are a variety of uses, but we're looking at like carpenters' bays and, you know, contractor bays, uh, a type of use, perhaps somebody will have their, you know, storage of, 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 uh, you know, um, vehicles in there or, 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 you know, company vehicles and so forth. Anytime they have a garage, uh, they make a sealed floor, and you put in floor drains, and that leads to a double containment tight tank. So that's a tank inside of a tank in case there's a leak, uh, anything that goes into, into the floor drains, goes into a tank, which if that leaks, goes into a secondary containment with an alarm that goes off, uh, both an interior for when it normally needs the pumping and the exterior, uh, if there's a breach of the internal tank, it captures, uh, that. So safe design, new, modern design. Um, and, um, Mr. McLaughlin would like to, a, a good-looking building here. Um, again, it's, it's pretty much screened from Queen Anne. You'd really have to, I think, crane your neck to see it, it's gonna be so far back, but, um, behind the other building, and there are some nice pine trees that have grown up over the years in the front. We're adding a bunch of trees, some nice big islands, introducing the rain gardens, stormwater drainage, uh, robust stormwater. Uh, right now, there's very few stormwater controls, although we are blessed with the nice sandy Harwich soils. Uh, we're gonna be intercepting that. We're gonna actually repave the front and, and clean that all up, make it a nice, uh, attractive, uh, site, uh, as some of these you see can be. Um, but basically, um, you know, reduce the dusty mess that's in the back and, and have it be a much, uh, cleaner operation and nicer, uh, for the town. Probably add to the tax revenue, I would imagine, uh, somewhat. Uh, we've got some comments from town staff, again, that we worked with the, uh, Griffin Rider very carefully to fine-tune the drainage. He did approve the stormwater yesterday at his public hearing. Um, I gave him, uh, a slight addendum on the, uh, the, with the times of checking on the stormwater O and M, uh, corrected that today, so he's, he's, we're, uh, uh, there's a couple little edits to that that we made, very ministerial, uh, items. But, uh, so the latest set to nineteen twenty-one is, is, is good to go. Um, during construction, I'll make a tiny, couple of tiny, almost unnoticed changes, uh, that he wanted. Um, but, uh, in, in essence, you can approve this plan, and it's, uh, it's in good shape. We've got a fence dumpster in the back, we've got a little walkway behind the building. We're in compliance, um, with the lot coverage requirements. Um, again, oh, the, uh, town engineer or the DPW director had noticed that, uh, in the past, not under Mr. McLaughlin's watch, but, uh, someone had pushed the fence in a couple of places. And, uh, I don't know if, uh, that's been fixed yet or not, but we're on it, and, and we certainly will repair that, and would be happy to have that be conditioned. Uh, all the town comments seemed reasonable. The water main is on our side of the road, so it looks like we'll be able to tap that without breaking into the pavement of, of Queen Anne, which is good. Uh, one of the comments was, it's under a five-year moratorium, uh, against breaking open that pavement now that you've done the overlay, uh, repaving. I don't know whether it's full depth or, or an overlay, but in any event, we'll, we'll have to live with that. Um, I think that we may be able to tap, backtap the gas main and, and, and push a mole underneath to the extent that we can't. Um, we'll put some propane tanks behind the building and power it with propane, and then just switch over the, uh, the ejectors, uh, on the, uh, on the heating units, uh, to natural gas when and if that becomes available, uh, after the five-year period. Um, there was a request by the water department to drop a, um, a water meter pit in, that's fine. Again, we're gonna be repaving out front, so it's not a problem. We'll put the water meter pit near the sign, so if you want to condition it that, uh, we, you know, meet all the requirements of the water department, we'd be happy to put that, uh, meter pit out there so that they don't own all the way back to the building. Um, so, uh, I believe that takes care of some of the comments. Uh, again, you've got the building plans, this was continued a number of times, um, uh, as we worked through the stormwater, and, uh, of course, with COVID, we've had people out, and it's just been a, been a, been a tough role. But, um, I think you've got a nice approvable plan here. I think it'll be a nice addition to the community, and we'd look forward to answering any questions that you might have, uh, on the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ojala. Uh, do we have any, the report for the town?
Um, we do have some comments. Um, Mr. Ojala has encompassed all of the departmental comments that were submitted, aside from the health comment of a fully compliant septic system, which I believe he did, did talk about a tight tank. But, um, aside from that, engineering did touch base with us, and he did do a conditional approval on the stormwater. And we have a revised plan to reduce the size of the structure to seven thousand four hundred eighty square feet with five bays. And aside from that, they have met all of the other planning board requirements for submittal.
Thank you very much, it looks like they went from, from seven to five bays. Any questions from the, from the board? Mr. Rouse?
Um, Mr. Ojala, does, um, Mr. McLaughlin own the warehouse in the front also of one ninety-five?
Yes.
Is that one ninety-five?
Correct. Yeah, so the buildings are both, will both be under one ownership.
Okay, thank you.
They, they, uh, just to clarify, they rent out to, um, other, you know, businesses. As shown on the parking calculations, there's a little assortment, and they do have some changeover and so forth, so bit of a moving target, but, uh, yeah, we control the whole property.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chadwick?
Thank you. Um, I think it, was it mentioned, um, that this would be contractors and, uh, you know, landscapers and so on and so forth? Uh, but I also thought I heard you say, um, carpenter, and, you know, we had a case before us, I think, last meeting or the meeting before, um, where the applicant came before us because of a change in, in use. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, uh, from manufacturing warehouse to cat carpentry. And they had to come before for a change in use, so I just wanted to clarify that in my head. Thanks.
So I, I guess I could respond somewhat just by saying that that would just typically be one of the contractors it would have in there. Um, if there's, uh, an industrial use, like a cabinet maker that's doing noisy things, uh, certainly the, the board may have the authority and want to review that. I think the building commissioner would be the first line of defense against the tenants. They generally have to, you know, check in with him before they get the occupancy of the unit or, or, or change. Uh, and then any uses, it's a pretty liberal zone, but, uh, again, you don't want a high-traffic generator in there. Um, you know, either for septic or for, or, or for parking. Um, although we do have fairly ample parking on the site. Um, so I, I think it would be just a case-by-case basis on the use table specifically, but, um, we've always just held out that it's gonna be warehouse or contractor-type days. Um, and then there's some room for company vehicles, and I, I believe those permits are, those uses are generally allowed, uh, through your general special permit process.
Megan, do you have something to add to that? Change of views?
I just wanted to confirm that what Craig said was correct. We did have something similar last, uh, last meeting, two weeks ago. Um, and I'm looking now to see if we need to do anything with a change of use. Um, but I don't, I don't think his application indicates there is a change of use.
Right. Dave?
Yeah, out front, those uses are, I have been there for many years, and there's licenses that have been in front of the town for, like, one guy got a couple of cars for sale, and there's a mechanic out there, there's, there's other things that do require permitting of the town, but those are all gonna remain. In the back, what we ask for and what would request tonight is just warehouse contractor bays, um, you know, of, of a, of a typical character that would be allowed. Um, if there's anything special, we'll absolutely come back. But, uh, I think we'll just go for the general, whatever's allowed as a right under that description.
Mr. Harris, did you have a question, comment?
No.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin?
Oh, you're behind me.
Phone. Star six or whatever. Still can't hear you.
Yeah, we got you now. Mr. McLaughlin, we lost you again.
How do I unmute?
There you go.
You're all star six.
Uh, uh, okay, thank, thank you, I'll try again, take three. Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I just wanted to add, uh, want to thank you for your time, and I want to clean up this property, I think I've done a lot already. It was really kind of a mess when I bought it. And so I have a lot of pride in the things I own. And, um, I, I think landscaper, you know, uh, uh, Dan, you mentioned contractor-based warehouse, landscape, right, I think would be another, uh, potential use.
Yeah, I'm an electrician, somebody like that, uh, just a typical, um, house, house contractor would be a typical tenant.
Very good, is there anybody in the public that has any questions? Any other questions, any, uh, objections to what we're seeing here?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Bill Stoltz?
Hi, Bill.
Uh, the only question I have, do we, if we're not gonna have natural gas, do we want the, um, gas tanks put on the site plan before we approve this?
That's a good question. Uh, is this something, I haven't seen that before, uh, Mr. McLaughlin?
Condition, um, if I could propose to the chair?
Yes.
That the, the fuel tanks, you know, uh, go behind the building. Um, so, uh, they will be, you know, off the traffic path and, and, and subject to review by the fire department. There's a number of, of code, um, that, you know, they have to be satisfied. But it would simply be, and they wouldn't need to be particularly large, but just, uh, in the area of Leach Pit Nine, the northeast corner of the building, I'm sure they would just go in that green space there, just, just off the, off the walk. And again, it's a small footprint tank, and it's a temporary, uh, situation. We would, could never afford to stay on propane forever, so, but it's very neat, and as soon as that moratorium's up, the gas is gonna be connected.
Um, how, how large will the tanks be? They're gonna be kind of gallons?
Well, it's just a matter of how often you want to refill them and so forth, and, and the propane trucks at five dollars a gallon are very happy to come out. So, I mean, I think we'd probably just do the, the size of a, of a, uh, probably do a dual, dual-tank residential style that you'd see outside of a, you know, um, well, I don't know, it's not a motor home, but, you know, you, you look at it, about a three-foot cylinder, it's about four feet high, two of them, probably.
And you think that will, that will heat all the bays in that new section, that seventy-five hundred square feet?
Well, again, you know, it's how often do you want to fill them? But if you've got a dual-tank system, I, I think that would be fine. Uh, you know, if you want to put a condition that we bury the tank, we could even do that. But, I mean, this is an industrial zone, we're next to the dump, you know, uh, the old landfill property, so there's, there's no prying eyes. Um, you know, it would be a pretty, pretty benign, um, little, uh, row of tanks there if we had to add a third one. Um, and again, temporary is a very strong word, and this will not be there for long if we can't tap. And I would suspect that Mr. McLaughlin will look very hard at tapping the back, tapping that gas main and just, and just pushing it under the road. They can jack under roads very easily these days. They have laser-guided, um, um, bores that can, you know, start at the back building and come out wherever you want, hundreds of feet away. It may well be worth it because propane is so expensive, um, just to do that.
And won't they have a problem tapping into the gas main if it's underneath the road?
Well, the nice thing is that there's a gas line that's on the other side of the pavement. Um, the, the site plan isn't pulled up, but there's a, there's a number of mains in the road, and I believe the one that's on the shoulder on the other side could be tapped. They're generally only down about two feet, and, uh, it's off the pavement, so that would be our target.
Okay, well, again, I think we should have the gas tanks on the site plan, um, whether you enclose them in a fence like you would the dumpsters or whatever, so that we know what's gonna happen with that moratorium on the gas lines. Because that would be for four years.
Well, through the chair, if I could suggest a conditional approval of a revised site plan, you know, sh, showing it, uh, generally in the area of the corner of the building here, um, and would be happy to screen it. So a screened enclosure on near the northeast corner of the building in the green space, temporary, not to exceed five years, would be fine with that condition. But, uh, Mr. McLaughlin is, um, has been waiting a long time and would love to get going on this and, and clean up the town, so hopefully a minor condition like that would be, uh, approvable, again, right in this area here.
Right. Yeah, I believe you have, had your hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just through you to, um, to our Assistant Town Administrator. Um, Megan, does the board have, have any approvals for, um, above-ground propane tanks?
No, they do not.
Okay, um, so I, I guess, um, one suggestion, uh, Mr. Chair, for the board and for the applicant to just consider, that, um, perhaps we can add a condition that any, um, any few above-ground fuel tanks necessary are placed in, as the applicant suggested, the northeast corner of the building, and shall be, um, screened. Uh, there's, shall be subject to the approval, um, the placement shall be subject to the approval of the, um, Harwich Fire Department, and, um, and, uh, their placement shall not exceed, I don't know, five years, um, five years from the date of the issuance of the special permit, and, um, I had one other item, give me a second. Oh, and, um, the placement shall be, uh, the placement of the fuel tanks shall be included on the ASBIL plans, the final ASBIL, ASBIL plans that are submitted. Um, would that work for you, Megan, and for the applicant?
I, yeah, yes, that would work for the applicant, and, um, I think that's a good suggestion. Also, I, as Mr. Ojala said, am gonna pursue the gas option, uh, first, and this will be a fallback position.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, this is, this is Dave, I think it should, it should include both of those alternatives. Should the natural gas option not be possible, we then move to the gas tank approach, you know, one condition.
Okay.
And I, I want a second. I, I just want a second Mary's motion, that's all.
Uh, don't think we have a motion.
I don't think it was a motion.
I think a condition.
It's just a proposed condition, but I'll get to the motion in a second.
Right.
Okay.
Mr., through you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Ojala, anything objectionable to, to those?
No, along the lines of what we've been talking about, any, any reasonable condition like that is fine, and I think you get five other conditions of approval, they all look very good to us.
Excellent.
Dave, Mr. Mr. Chairman, uh, is, are we all gonna, also going to need a condition for the fence? Or has that already been corrected?
I, I, I do not think it has been corrected, but I talked to the tenant who's responsible and told him to fix it, and if he doesn't fix it, I'll fix it, and I'm happy to have that be a condition.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Sounds like we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Harris, I move, we close the public hearing.
Craig Chadwick.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, who do we have as a second?
Craig Chadwick.
I, I second.
Okay. Uh, let's do a roll call vote, Bill, Bill Stoltz?
Aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Mary Maslowski?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
Dave Harris?
Dave Harris, aye.
Greg Chadwick? Greg Chadwick.
Greg Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye.
Mr. Chair, this is Mary Maslowsky. I move that we vote to adopt the following findings of fact. One, that the property is located within the I dash L zoning district. Two, the parking lot complies with the requirements of Article nine off street parking regulations. Three, adequate landscaping and buffers for adjacent residential properties have been provided. Four, screening of parking complies with the provisions of the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section three twenty-five dash forty-three. Five, the proposed use is allowable with a special permit. The use as developed will not adversely affect the. Seven, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. Eight, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Nine, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use.
Second motion.
Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. McParland. Roll call vote. Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Mary Maslowsky.
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McParland.
Joe McParland, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Greg Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye.
Mr. Chair, this is Mary Maslowsky. I move that we vote to approve a special permit for the proposed use. I hereby move that we vote to approve the application submission PB twenty twenty dash twenty-four, one ninety-five Queen Anne Road LLC for a use special permit. For structures with twenty or more new parking spaces. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich. The following conditions are imposed. One, supplemental regulations pursuant to Section three twenty-five dash fourteen dot I shall be met manufacturing. Two, any change of use that may require further planning board review.
Second motion.
Thank you, Mr. McParland. Roll call vote. Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Mary Maslowsky.
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McParland.
Joe McParland, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Greg Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve with conditions, a site plan review, special permit on the application submission and plans. For PB twenty twenty dash twenty-four, one ninety-five Queen Anne Road LLC to construct an industrial warehouse slash contractor structure. Five bays, seven thousand four hundred and eighty square feet. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich and the following conditions.
Arthur Rouse.
One, all drainage and stormwater requirements, local, state, and federal shall be met and approved by the Harwich Town Engineer prior to the commencement of construction operations. Including a stormwater permit pursuant to the local comprehensive stormwater and illicit discharge regulations. Two, water department requirements shall be met. Three, any changes to existing signage or new signage shall meet the requirements of Article seven sign regulations. Four, conformance with the Town Code, Section four hundred dash eighteen dot G, inspection certificate of completion and ASBIL plans shall be met. Five, this decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Six, the applicant shall seek to use natural gas at the facility and in the event. The applicant cannot use a national, natural gas, any propane fuel tanks necessary shall be placed at the northeast corner of the building and shall be screened. Such tanks shall be subject to the approval, placement shall be subject to the approval of the fire department. And the final location of any tanks shall be included on the final ASBIL plans submitted to the town planning.
Second motion.
Thank you, Joe.
We're not done yet.
I'm sorry, could I, could I add?
I thought you were done. I'm sorry, Mary.
No, no, I thought I was too, but I missed one. Item number seven, that the applicant shall repair the existing fence.
Right.
As necessary. That's seven.
Now, a second.
Thank you, Joe. Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Mary Maslowsky.
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McParland.
Joe McParland, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Greg Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Very good, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. Your thoughtful consideration very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a nice night.
So right now we have. In our public meeting section, we have two covenant releases. Have to do with, the first one, I believe, is. From PB two thousand seven dash thirty-six. Yikes. Megan, did you want to give us the comments on this?
Sure. White Rock Partners LLC, current owner Mark Zippo, managing member, is seeking a partial release of the seven of the remaining eight lots at Southwest Gate Road, held under the agreement and covenant, book and page two-two-five-oh-one-two-six-six. The subdivision is a two thousand seven open space residential development definitive subdivision. The Water Department noted that the department has no outstanding issues. The Town Engineer, Griffin Rider, reviewed the documents and plans and had the following comments. The vacant lots adjacent to the subdivision road. Have been completely cleared. Are we on the right one?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Have been completely cleared with the soil exposed. There doesn't appear to be erosion controls or vegetation installed. Or applied to the clear disturbed areas. Section four hundred dash fourteen D four. Permanent erosion control installation states that permanent. Final vegetation and mechanical measures to stabilize the land surface and control erosion shall be installed as soon as practicable after construction ends. Stockpiled material is being stored adjacent to the stormwater basin on what appears to be lot four. The stockpiled material should be removed. The stormwater basin has not yet been vegetated. Based on the comments included, the engineer suggests that one of the lots continue to be held by covenant until the work described herein is completed. Planning staff mentions that this is an open space residential development with eight buildable, buildable lots. In lieu of sidewalk fee payment shall be made prior to the release of the first lot. The sidewalk fee noted in the case history is eight thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars sixty cents. Staff concurs to recommend partial release. One lot, lot four, will continue to be held under agreement and covenant until all requirements have been satisfied.
Very good. Thank you very much. Seems pretty sudden dry. Any comments? Questions? Dave?
Yeah, I'm assuming that all we received on this is the placeholder and we're just going by Megan's golden tones. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, we did. We actually, I think they were emailed out. I received a limited staff report email earlier today. So. That's what I have. I was assuming that everybody else received it.
Yeah, I just got my last package in today's mail. I didn't have time to look at it, to count them all. So anyway, that's fine with me. I just wanted to confirm.
Okay. Greg.
Thank you. I, there was no site plan or, or any map showing the location. As part of the application or the material that I received. Was that, did I miss it or is that not part of the package or is it not needed?
That was, that was not part of the application.
Thank you. The reason I asked, I took a ride out there today and it was hard to tell what was lot one to what, what lots were what. And I was a bit concerned about the, the concern that was expressed about vegetation and so on and so forth. But I couldn't really tell where anything was. As I said, I didn't have a, a map in front of me or a plot plan. Is that something that we should have? Is that necessary for making a decision?
Are you asking me?
And I guess another question is why, why was this piece of land decided to hold versus any others, any other? Piece of property in there. Lots. Sure, Megan.
I can answer part of that. Lot four, lot four was chosen to be held because that is the lot that the stockpiled materials are currently being stored on. Even though they are, they should be removed, that is, that is where stockpiled materials are currently being stored. I honestly don't know if the, if you should have a map or not. We can certainly continue this and this and the next, because the next is the same situation with no. Plan of the lots or, or locus map.
Looks like it's just a partial release though. And if we're holding on with number four, if that's where the stockpiled material is, then there's certainly some leverage. In the remaining release, I don't know. They were, but the, but town suggests and recommends a partial release. Mary, do you have any thoughts on precedent here?
So my only question is, I don't know if, if my email blocked it, but I didn't get the limited staff report, which I thought we did have, but. Unless I'm just losing my mind and I can't find it. I don't.
I can't find it either, Mary.
Nor can I.
So I, I mean, I'd be fine if Megan could just read us the, the proposed motion.
Sure. Recommended motion is move to approve a partial release of agreement and covenant for seven lots. Being lots number one through three and lots number five through eight of the Southwest Gate Road subdivision, planning board two zero zero seven dash thirty-six.
So I'd make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, please.
Let's go.
Okay, so number one, I'm wondering if they have a draw permit to strip that lot and move it for storage. And number three, I would think it'd be wiser for the planning board to. Set aside one of the other lots and not the lot that's already been stripped. Knowing that it's, it'd be more anxious.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, just a point of order. If we have a second to the motion, then we can discuss.
Okay.
I, I give a second. Joe McParland.
Yep. Any other comments on this?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Thank you. The, in lieu of sidewalk fee payment shall be paid prior to release of the first lot. Sidewalk fee noted in the case history is eighty-five fifty-three and change. So that means we have not received that eighty-five fifty-three yet. But once we, if, if we approve this release, that will be required before the release is granted. Is that correct?
It looks like to me.
Thank you.
Mary?
Mr. Chair, through you to, to our Assistant Town Administrator. Did, is there? So, sorry, let me start again. Did the Town Engineer recommend that we hold back lot four? Did he actually specifically recommend a particular parcel? Then, then, and that is part of the Town Engineers' suggestion as far as the, the parcel that we would withhold?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I would think it'd be wiser for the planning department to hold a lot that's, that's, has not been stripped and. And has been hanging around. It's going to be worthwhile for the owners to get everything done so they can get that other lot released.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we know in fact that none of the other lots have been stripped? Because when I was out there today, it looked like. There was a lot of just sand, more than one lot's worth.
The staff report from Griffin Rider, our Town Engineer, says the vacant lots adjacent to the subdivision roadway have been completely cleared with the soil exposed.
Does that mean all, all lots?
Vacant lots.
Mr. Chairman, does that mean all lots have been stripped?
I, I can't say. It says the vacant lots adjacent. To the subway roadway, subdivision roadway. So it's unclear from that language.
Did, did, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
It, it sounds, it sounds from what Megan read that the Griffin wrote, it sounds like they all have been stripped. And as I said, I was out there today, but without a map, I couldn't really tell. But there was a lot of. There was more than one lot's worth of sand.
I'm wondering whether or not we should just continue this. Do our due diligence and actually look at the site and if necessary, request in the next packet a. A site plan, just so we can know what we're looking at. Doesn't, it would appear that there's, there's no division or no meaningful division on the site. So discriminating between lots number one and three and five and eight. Mary?
So just from a practical standpoint, to clarify for the public as well. What it means is that when we release a lot, that means that they can apply for a building permit to, to start moving forward on, on. On a sale. So, or construction. By holding, it seems like the recommendation is that we're holding back one lot and the one lot would be sufficient to cover the cost. To fix whatever needed to be fixed under the covenant. So that's really all it's about. You know, given the Town Engineers' recommendation, I wouldn't have a problem voting the, the partial release tonight. But that being said, if my colleagues aren't, then, you know, I, I don't know that it hurts to hold it for another meeting, but I don't know that it's necessary.
Dave, I see your hand.
Yes, I'm comfortable with the various approach.
Well, we'd like to go ahead. We have a motion in a second and it is a partial release. And that would allow them to move ahead and us to move ahead.
Mary, Joe McParland, do you want me to withdraw my second?
I, I, I think there's a, there's a motion in a second on the floor, so we can.
Okay.
If the consensus is to take a vote, then I think Mr. Chair can, can take the vote. But if the consensus is that people don't want to go forward, then I'm happy to, to withdraw my motion.
Well, do we have severe objections or do we have more than like, Craig, I mean, you seem to have a good point here.
Yeah, I, I personally would like to see a, a map and take a ride out there again, just so that I know exactly what we're doing and where we're doing it. I don't think it's, you know, critical or severe, whatever the word used was, but. I, I'd be in favor of that approach. And if it's, you know, not a hardship on anybody to continue it for the next, until the next meeting to get that, that. Information, a simple plot plan, I'd be in favor of that. Thank you.
And Greg, do we have people that are lining up behind Craig?
Yeah, I will. I, I think we should wait to see a, a site plan where the lots are.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. I'll, I'll make the motion to put the matter over to the April meeting.
All right, so I'll withdraw my mo, I'll withdraw my motion if Joe withdraws a second, then we can just re-calibrate for the next meeting.
Okay, let's do that. Withdrawn, so noted. And a motion to continue. And a motion to continue?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Greg Chadwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Roll call, Mr. Stoltz.
Yes.
Mr. Rouse?
Yes.
Mary Masowski, aye.
Mr. McParland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
Mr. Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Greg Chadwick, aye.
And Barry says aye as well. Second item is, on this covenant release is the PB twenty sixteen dash oh five Denwich Road, Tonka Girl LLC, Mike Escher as manager. I have that particular document. Megan, did, did that go out in the limited staff report?
This went out in the limited staff report. There have not been any further updates on it.
Okay, would you like to bring us up to speed on this?
Sure. Michael Escher, manager, seeking a full release of the three lots at Denwich Road under the Agreement and Covenant, book and page two nine seven three two slash twelve. The town engineer, Griffin Rider, reviewed the documents and plans and offers the following comments. The vacant lots adjacent to the subdivision roadway have been completely cleared with the soil exposed. There doesn't appear to be erosion controls or vegetation installed, applied to be cleared, disturbed areas. Section four hundred fourteen D four, Permanent Erosion Control Installation, states that permanent vegetation and mechanical measures to stabilize the land surface and control erosion shall be installed as soon as practicable after construction ends. Stockpiled material is being stored on at least two of the vacant properties. The fire hydrants don't appear to be shown on the as-built plan. Based on those comments, he suggests that one of the lots continue to be held by covenant until the work is completed. No outstanding issues from the water department. Planning staff indicates that there are three lots. Lot one is three Denwich Road. Lot two is seven Denwich Road and lot three is eleven Denwich Road. The in lieu of sidewalk fee payment has been satisfied. A stamped as-built plan, plan showing the fire hydrants shall be submitted before the final lot release. And staff concurs and recommends that one lot, being lot one, which is number three Denwich Road, continue to be held under the Agreement and Covenant until the above issues have been satisfied.
So the recommended motion, just to be clear, is to move to approve a partial release of agreement and covenant for two of the lots.
That's correct, lots number two and number three of the Denwich Road subdivision, twenty sixteen dash oh five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joe.
I make that motion.
Motion to, move to approve the partial release?
Yes.
David Harris, second.
Mr. Harris, second.
Thank you, David.
Do we have any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Stoltz?
So the, do I understand that now that we, we are going to have two lots that are going to be held?
Yes.
One.
Yeah, one.
One, three.
One, one held, two released.
Yeah, but before.
That's my understanding.
Well, before they were going to hold lot four, and then they just get through saying you're going to hold lots three.
Different matter, Bill. This, that was Cape Road and this is Denwich Road. Bill, this is the second, this is a separate subdivision.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, the first one was Southwest Gate Road with Mark Zipo as the original owner. This is Chaplain.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And this is Denwich Road, Tonka Girl LLC.
Sorry.
That's okay, it's the same situation, but two separate subdivisions.
I got it mixed up, sorry.
So do we want to move on this motion in a second? Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, a question or clarification? This is the same issue that we just had with the other one, where we didn't have a plot plan or, or a map or site plan. We did not, I want to clarify, didn't receive one with this one. I didn't have one as part of my package and want to make sure it's, my understanding is the same as everyone else.
Yep, you just got the one with the photograph at the bottom.
Correct, but you really can't tell where the lots are from there.
Right.
But I had the same, or similar trouble looking at this one as I did the other one. It's kind of hard to tell what's what.
So I think what the, what they're just saying is until this work is completed, they can't really. Yep, Mary, sorry.
I just have the same comment that I had the last time. I mean, we got a recommendation for the, from the town engineer that holding back one parcel is sufficient in the covenant, but again, I'll defer to my colleagues. If, if you want to put it off, I, I just, you know, I, I didn't think it was necessary the last time and, and I don't this time, but I'll defer.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dave, Mr. Chairman, I, I, if this were released of everything without a plot plan and, and without the ability to inspect it and, and the recommendation from the town engineer, it'd be one thing, but we're, we're holding one lot. I trust that the town engineer to give us adequate and accurate information. And, you know, this is, I, I don't see the need under the circumstances to go out and inspect the property.
Bill?
Well, I just thought that we should postpone till the next meeting and, and have some kind of an idea where the lots are, just like we're doing with the, the one before this one.
So do we want to be consistent or do we want to be inconsistent tonight?
Yeah.
I think we should be consistent.
Yeah, same here.
I would agree.
Then I think we have to withdraw the motion in a second and drop a new motion.
Withdraw the second.
Thank you.
I think Joe had the motion.
Yeah, Joe had the motion. David there?
I think he had the second.
You looking for something for me?
No, I think David Harris was, was the person that seconded, so I think he just needs to withdraw his second. To your opponent.
I withdraw the second.
Thank you. Let's get a new motion in a second to continue.
So I don't think you need a, of, nothing more than, than just placing it on the next, next agenda.
Okay. I will request that, if we might, Megan, that Elaine introduces the requisite documentation, so we can at least have an idea of what we're looking at.
Absolutely, I'll ask her to include it.
Thank you so much. Very good, so now onto new business, Board of Appeals Advisory Opinions from March thirty-first.
Excuse me, do we have to vote on that continuance?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking for Board of Appeals Advisory Opinions. Do I not have this document? Board of Appeals, here we go. So did you want to address this, Megan, or just an announcement? To the public?
Sure. We have the Zoning Board of Appeals, Appeals Public Hearing scheduled for Wednesday, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one at seven PM via remote access. The agenda includes case twenty dash fifty-three, which was continued from one twenty-seven twenty-one. Helen Murdoch, trustee, through her agent Susan Ladue of Eastward Companies, has applied for a variance from the total site coverage requirements of section three twenty-five dash fifty-two and table three, height and bulk regulations in order to add a pool and patio. The application is in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section ten. The property is located at twenty-three Bascom Hollow Road, map ninety-seven, parcel B two ten, in the RR and WR zoning districts. And the second case is case twenty-one dash five, and I'm looking for the second page because I'm.
Either, I, I don't know.
I don't have that.
So it's just a, it's a special permit to build a second floor addition on a pre-existing non-conforming use on Ocean Avenue.
Okay, on Ocean Avenue.
Yep, so Megan, do you not have the second page?
I don't have the second page, so I'm not sure if there is a third case.
So yeah, there are multiple cases, I can give a little review if you'd like.
Sure.
Case twenty twenty-one oh six, Kathleen Riley, through her agent Paul Muldoon, for a special permit to, to construct a one-story screen porch addition on a pre-existing non-conforming single family on Two Northern Ave. Next case is twenty twenty-one oh seven, it's a James and Regina Devario, through their agent George Avery, to, who've applied for a special permit to expand a front porch on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at the address of fourteen Union Street. The next case is Pilate Verma, trustee, through her agent Bill Crowell, for a special permit, or in the alternative of variance, to create a finished habitable space in the basement of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at five Lake Yard Road. The next case is Kevin and Nancy Haley, through their agent Bill Crowell, two who have applied for a special permit or in the alternative of variance, to renovate a pre-existing non-conforming cottage in order to add a fourth bedroom and to convert a garage to a kitchen dining room, as well as a special permit to replace or add existing retaining walls. That is at twenty-two Quayson Lane, also known as nineteen Pine Street. The next case is twenty twenty-one dash ten, which is Anthony Pates, through his agent Bill Crowell, who's applied for a change in a variance granted by the board in case number two thousand nine dash twenty-four, in order to add a bedroom above a pre-existing non-conforming attached garage, as well as a variance for the existing landscape walls bordering the driveway. That is at ninety-seven Great Western Road. Those are the cases before the Zoning Board of Appeals. The only other matters that they've got scheduled are approval of minutes and business at the board's discretion.
Very good, thank you so much, Mary. We also have with us this evening, for our next item of old business, Sarah Corjeff from the Cape Cod Commission, who's graciously waited online for about ninety minutes. She will bring us up to speed. Thank you, hi, Sarah, bring us up to speed, the design guidelines that you all received in your packets this week, and the recommended amendments and changes and what this means for the context of the article in the town law. Thank you, Sarah, good to see you this evening.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know you've all had a, a long meeting, so I promised to be brief. But I did want to walk you through the design guidelines draft that's in your packet. And I think you have two things, you have both a redlined copy and then the very last item is, is a clean copy, which may be the easiest to look at. And, and I guess I, I'll start just by making some overall comments. I want to mention that my colleague Liz Kellum is also on the line here too. Really, the reason we're before you tonight talking about this is because the Cape Cod Commission has offered to develop some illustrative graphics to, really to illustrate these design guidelines and make them more user-friendly for you. And, and Liz will be one of the people working on those graphics. And we really want to make sure that you are comfortable with the narrative language before we dig deep into developing those graphics. So the, the idea behind the design guidelines is really to have three main sections, one that sort of justifies the guidelines by talking a little bit about the history of West Harwich and what makes it unique, and, and then to go into some specifics about the desired types of, of development or alterations that would affect historic properties. And that would be section two, and then the desired types of design that would be involved in new construction. And that's section three. So we really wanted to personalize these design guidelines so that they really are tied to West Harwich in, in their ideas and yet are broad enough that they aren't really constrictive in the types of, of design that could be implemented in the area. We, we also wanted to have these design guidelines really be complementary to the zoning regulations that were adopted by the town this fall. So there are several places in the design guidelines where we actually reference back to those design regulations, and I think those are things that we've included in the hopes that it really personalizes the document a little bit more for West Harwich. And I guess finally, our goal is to, to have these be something that our designing guidelines that serve all audiences. They would certainly be beneficial to all the review boards in town, particularly to the planning board. But also, I think you want them to be able to guide property owners and developers who are looking at doing something with their property in West Harwich and have them come away after looking at them with a, a good sense of the type of, of new development that is really encouraged in this area. So with that, I guess I would just state that the, the historical narrative section, which we want to keep relatively brief, but to sort of talk a little bit about the history of West Harwich, that's sort of self-explanatory. But section two and section three are where we actually have specific guidelines listed out. And so section two, Design Guidelines for Work on Historic Structures, focuses on the key elements of protecting the historic resources that are there and encouraging additions to be placed to the side or the rear in such a way that they wouldn't harm the historic features. And as you go through the, the eight guidelines listed under historic structures, you'll see at the base of each of those, there's a gray or highlighted in gray, there's a suggestion as to how they might be illustrated with a graphic. Because I think if you look at design guidelines these days, the ones that appear to be most successful at conveying important points are the ones that are really heavy on graphics and illustrations. Let's see, and I think, and then I just say the same thing really on section three, Guidelines for New Construction, focused on the key elements to really making sure that any new structures built in this area would be consistent with the character of West Harwich. So they talked about things like orienting the building to the street, following the setback patterns that are established there and, and that are spelled out really in the, the new zoning regulations. They talk about the scale and proportion, facade design and materials, things to try to guide any kind of new development. And again, in gray, at the base of each of those eight guidelines, we have recommended or suggested an illustration that might be used to highlight that, that guideline. And I notice as I scroll through them on my computer that there are a few that actually say standard rather than guideline. That was not intended, but I think there is a question for your board as to whether you want to consider these standards or guidelines. Initially, my understanding was that they would be guidelines, they would not be regulatory, they would just serve as, as criteria, if you will, or maybe not even criteria would be too formal. But guidance for the board to use in, in rendering any decisions they're making and guidance for people who are looking to do work in, in the West Harwich area. But if you, if your intention was to have them be standards, then we should talk about that and, and certainly make that change.
Thank you, Sarah. I think I just wanted to also clarify that what the document, the language of these quote unquote standards and guidelines is an emulsification taken from about, I think it was eight or ten source documents that are considered to be kind of state-of-the-art work in this area for design guidelines in New England, that were put together by Liz and by Sarah and by Charlene. And we sifted that material. And we sifted that material, went kind of boiled it, boiled it down to essential like propositional statements. So the question of guideline versus standard is actually, I think there's a probably important legality involved there. But, you know, I think you'll see that the concept here of having simple verbal instructions and images that are based on the, the source visuals and the visual language of the, the district allows this to be probably a pretty interesting and important document that will be, could conceivably become part of that group of, you know, best practices. So it's good work that, that they're helping us to accomplish here. Dave, hi.
I made a mistake when I got this. I made the mistake of reading the red line first instead of going back. So it was a little ice cream, but the coffee was very good regardless of the fact that, that it was a little hard to get through. I looked at it from two perspectives. One, does this aim us, aim developers in a direction we wanted them to go? And would it be clear to them and design professionals? And still give them some latitude. And I, I think this document gets an A on both, both those measures. It's clearly not written in standard language and it would require substantial changes. But I think guideline, if it's, as a guideline, it hits the target right on the nose. And I really want to commend the people that put this together.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Mary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I tend to agree. I think guidelines is the way to go. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Sarah, I would assume that we have more discretion when it's a guideline versus a, versus a standard. So I, I do think it's a unique enough area that we may be better off having guidelines instead of standards because there may be circumstances where we can work within the guidelines where a standard might, might prevent something from happening. So I personally like the, the idea of the design guidelines versus having strict standards.
Yeah, I agree. I think that, that is the case, that guidelines will give you more flexibility. But at the same time, if you want to draw attention to them and really focus on them, then you can.
Thank you, Sarah.
And final output, the deliverable, will this be kind of like 11 by 17 sheet on both sides? Or like folded in half or in thirds? Or will this be just a single sheet? Or as, and also as a PDF, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I think a PDF is really what we're imagining. That's the way most guidelines are being distributed now in towns, putting them up on your website and distributing them electronically. Though I think we can talk about if you would like a paper version that can be handed out from your building department, for example, then we can discuss what would be the best format for that. We, we had talked about how a sort of poster might be a really effective way of, of conveying this on just a single page.
Hi, Dave. Yes.
What is, what is the schedule for getting, adding the illustrations? And the photographs?
Well, I think once we get a sense that your board is comfortable with the, the general language and, and the illustrations we've suggested, then we'll begin right away. It could take, well, it could take a couple of months, to be honest, to develop them and, and to have some back and forth with you because we would like to show you draft illustrations and make sure that you think that they're conveying the right information before we finalize anything. I guess my understanding is that that won't limit your ability to add language at town meeting about the creation of guidelines. I don't think that they have to be completed at the time that, that you add that, that you bring that language to town meeting, but it's, I guess that's, that's your determination, whether you feel that you need to have the, the document illustrated before then.
Thank you, Sarah. Craig, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a clarification, if, if these are guidelines, and I like the idea that it does give some flexibility, then with the planning board, if an applicant came before us and we didn't like the design, so then that's a very broad statement. We couldn't use the guidelines to deny the application, provided that the applicant met all the other zoning regulations. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly? Versus a standard where we would say, no, this clearly doesn't meet the standard. If a guideline is something I just read quickly about, you know, the height of the trees or mature trees to, to allow the facade to be seen from the street. As a developer, I'd say, you know, I think that tree is fine. We, you know, somebody on the planning board say, well, no, that's not the way I read the guideline. But I just want to understand in my head, we couldn't, given the fact that these are all just guidelines, we couldn't use those in any way solely to deny applications? Is that correct? Am I even making my question make sense?
I, I understand the question. I, I think some, that, that the answer is really dependent on how you word the addition to the zoning regulations, the West Harwich Special District, because and I don't have the language right in front of me that you're proposing, but if you specify that the board can use the guidelines, you know, as they see fit, then I think they may be able to, to say that if a project isn't, in their opinion, consistent with, with them, that you may be able to, to hold approval. But I guess I should turn to the attorneys on the board, maybe, and ask for their opinion.
Yes, Dave. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, it's incredibly difficult to regulate aesthetics.
Right.
It, it's even more difficult to write standards for aesthetics. So I, I think we have to stay within measurable parameters in order to have, have the basis for denying an applicant. The illustrations will go a long way toward helping developers and their design professionals in, in creating something that would meet the intent of our, of these guidelines.
One other thing too, I think that has to be said is that, you know, this is the product of an initiative that involves community support and community appetite for self-regulation. So we're trying to create a bottom-up kind of condition here where people who will want to do things and people will need to do build on empty lots and, and rebuild old structures and build new, but they will, what we're trying to do is create the environment or the ethos of doing it kind of as respectful of the, the district. So I think this is just one way of helping people stay within the kind of the guardrails of what we're trying to do in a gentle way as opposed to as a regulatory way. And as you say, these things can't be regulated, but we can suggest that this is what we'd like to see. Right? And I think that's kind of, you know, as far as we can go with it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you. I was thinking of it more from avoidance of potential litigation down the road. And just trying to clarify that these, I wouldn't want us to be in a situation where we say these are guidelines and then we hang our hat on something that's a guideline that could be interpreted differently by somebody else. And then we end up, you know, fighting it in court. And I'm not advocating that we make them standards because I think that would, I do think that would make it much more clear if there were somebody not meeting the standards versus a guideline which is open to interpretation.
Mary?
So just for you, Mr. Chair, I, I think that's, those are all hypotheticals. And I, I think you need to, to focus on those issues when you get to an application or allow town council to give us further guidance. I, I don't think that's a question that Sarah should be expected to answer for us or, or even Megan at this point. Because it, it may be different in different circumstances and it's going to depend on final language and, and, you know, I, I think we need to also ask, you know, through Megan to, to town administration, what further steps we need to take in order to, to finalize the guidelines on our own behalf. So as far as whether there, how far we can go and, and how we use them, I think that's, that's for town council to give us guidance at appropriate times. So I think right now it's too hypothetical and too speculative.
Well, this was a kind of a status report. So, and everybody now can see kind of what the content is and what the direction is and where we're headed. So we'll look forward to further iterations. And if ideas come up, make sure we all circulate them. And we'll get back to Liz and to Sarah. And I want to thank them both for taking time out of their evening to join us.
Happy to. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Hi, Dave.
Yeah, Sarah, you probably have a lot of sources for the kind of illustrations you have in mind. But one might, might be with the Boston Society of Architects or the Massachusetts Society of Architects, asking them for photographs of work where they have married contemporary with, with colonial architecture. And, but of course you need permission to include those photographs from the photographer. So just going out and, and taking pictures of things that are close, but don't quite hit the mark would make it a much more difficult task than, than reaching out to that kind of a resource that I just suggested.
Thank you. That's, that's a good suggestion. I think it is so often difficult to find photographs that illustrate exactly what you want, which is one reason why we're looking at a combination of photographs and illustrations, graphics that Liz will develop, because that way we can draw exactly what we want and we don't have to worry about whether we're using an example that everybody might know because it's their neighbor's home or something like that.
Exactly. Well, you could, you could go to another part of the country like Savannah or Washington DC too.
All right.
I'll go. Somebody wants to pay me.
All right. So we have, we, thank you all very much. Appreciate your input here and we'll move ahead with this and look forward to further iterations, as I said. I want to wrap it up tonight. We do not have meeting, minutes from the last meeting. But we do have some briefings and some reports and some general housekeeping material to go through. You probably all received the notice that we had a, an appeal filed by Mr. Winston. So that's in the works. We also, our Secretarial Service, our Board Clerk position is now going to be vacant as of April 5th. And I'm hoping that our liaison with the Selectmen's Office will get on the mark on that so we can move ahead and have some continuity in our paperwork in terms of, you know, institutional memory. And I also understand that the advertisement for the Town Planner's Position was put out and appeared today in mass, you know, in MMA. So were there any other general announcements, Megan, that you wanted to, to make? No, I see Mary's got her hand up.
Mary should go first.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate Katie on her promotion. And as the, as the new Health Director, following in, in Megan's shoes, so I will be sad that she is no longer our recording secretary, but congratulations and the best of luck in the new position. We're sure you will do wonderfully.
Thank you for saying that. I'm also good at like ignoring the obvious. Katie, all the best.
Second of all.
Dave?
Megan, I'd just like to let you know how useful your bulletins were over the past year. I actually showed them to other people from other jurisdictions in Florida and they said, wow, we wish we had somebody like that down here. It was, it was really a breath of fresh air and, and very needed and, and well-filled. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Katie. Katie will be continuing on with the tradition.
Dave, don't give her any ideas about moving to Florida.
Yeah, right.
Members of the board.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you, sir. I have another item. I don't know if it was in the first or second package. It says Agenda Item 3D, which is Memo from John Rendon to Elaine about, I guess, plantings at Sacquetucket. Is that something we're supposed to act on tonight or?
No, the status is going to be coming up and we will be discussing that, I think, at the next meeting. And yeah, she mentioned that that got in by accident. So, but we will be discussing that and that's going to be more of a complicated issue. This is Alan, is this the Alan Harbor thing?
I thought it was Sacquetucket.
Sacquetucket, good.
Right. There, there is an email from Elaine to John Rendon in your packet regarding Sacquetucket. And they wanted to amend their planting.
Right.
But Alan Harbor, yeah, club will be coming before you on, on the 13th.
Thanks for that.
Sounds like John Rendon's questions have a pretty short time fuse. So this will be on our agenda for the next meeting?
I, I think so.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't think he needs our authority to, to plant some plants.
No, if it's part of the landscape plan, I think he does.
Right.
Because it's under site plan review.
All right, Mary. I don't think I agree with you, but.
I, I think we need to act with dispatch though to keep John happy and to keep the trees growing.
Right. Okay, folks. I think that's our business tonight.
I move adjournment.
Second.
Mr. Stoltz. Okay, right there. Arthur's not here. Uh, Mary?
Peter Dazlowski, aye.
Joe McFarlane.
Joe McFarlane, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Greg Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Very good, folks. See you in two weeks.